I heard anything yet?
Are you talking about the 21-8?
Yeah, we have the Bailey's Hill.
No, no, this is the...
Coast Guard housing.
Ready? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 7th, 2017. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, opening comments. Richie?
I have none.
None. T?
I was just talking briefly with the town administrator. I would like the Coast Guard housing to give us an update meeting after the New Year.
Okay.
If you could get ahold of them and ask. I'm getting a lot of questions about what's happening.
Okay.
I'd rather have them tell us in front of the towns so the whole town can hear it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. And me, I'd like to thank the fishermen for, they pulled out a little early off the wharf good, so you get that rolling. And I understand that they're gonna be, you know, they actually come out two weeks early, and that was nice of them because this is their peaks, this is the time when they make their quota, and they decided to pull out early. And for people that don't realize it, they have to, there's a couple of boats down there that can actually come out and land, but they can't get down the causeway. So that's the problem they have, you know, they're so wide, they can't come down the causeway. So they needed that wharf to do it, and they decided to help us out and come out a little early to get those guys going on Monday, I believe it is?
Monday, correct.
Okay, so, and I want to keep an eye on that. I want them down there Monday morning, bright and early. And that's it, that's all I got. And the tree lighting was a wonderful time, I have to say. Santa Claus let me know that I was gonna get cold again this year, so.
You deserve it.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. The minutes from 11:02:17 and executive session minutes of 11:14:17, I'll entertain a motion that we've...
I've moved the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 11:02:17 and the executive session minutes of 11:14:17.
Second? Okay. I have, I think they're fine, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Citizens forum. Jim. Go to the microphone though, please, all right? Yeah. And identify. Identify, just to tell us who you are.
I am Jim Walsh. I am here tonight to remind folks, if they haven't seen it already, that on the 16th of December, it's a week from Saturday, at St. Thomas Aquinas Church, there will be a Christmas concert, and it's sponsored by the Ellingwood Concert Series as part of the Nahant Historical Society. The singers are really a wonderful group, about 35 of them. They usually perform, or they started their performance at Trinity Church at Copley Square in Boston. They are a superb group of singers and musicians, and I think it's going to be a great night. At this point, you might say, in history, we need to have an experience that brings us together rather than divides us. And I think music and the Christmas spirit can help do that, and I think we need it tremendously. The fee, there was a ticket cost because we had to hire these folks, is $25. But any student who attends with a paying customer is admitted free. So students are free if accompanied by a parent or friend. So I hope folks will take advantage of this. I wish we had the light on the causeway, so I had depended on that being there to let people know. But I appreciate the opportunity to come here and make a presentation tonight.
The time?
At 7 o'clock, Saturday, December 16th. Thanks, T.
Thank you.
Forgot that.
That's great. I'll spread the word, I know that, that's great. And it is, those are nice, those concerts are really good, so.
Yeah, you've come.
Oh, yeah. When I can, when I have time, I like to go to them.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Well, on the subject matter, the police sign broke, I understand?
Yes, it did.
Oh, it did?
And it's being repaired now.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
It's being repaired now.
How long it's gonna take?
It has been down for about three weeks, so it's gonna take another week.
Okay, I just, I figured, you know, when that breaks next time, we should rent one.
Yeah, I think we're ready to invest again, so we get a newer one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, fire station assessment committee update. Dave?
You can sit up there if you'd like.
You wanna come sit up here if you can?
Yeah.
Yes, sit right here, Dave.
Be nice to me. All right. Thank you for inviting us to your meeting. Before I say anything, I want to thank the committee that's been working for many hours on this already, Chief Feinberg, Austin Antrim, Dave Doyle, Frank McCardle, Dennis Ball, and John Fulgham. Fortunately, we're in this predicament due to the efforts of Austin Antrim in obtaining the purchase of a new fire engine, so it's a good problem to have that we have here. As you requested our last meeting, you basically wanted two solutions. One is for the temporary housing of the new engine when it gets here, and a second one would be to rebuild out, adding to the station. If I could deal with the first issue first, we have, we have an ability to get a housing for the engine. I don't have all the details, but the chief can give you better details on exactly the dimensions and how it all works. If you could speak to that first.
Sure, yeah. And can you give us a cost, too?
I'll give you an approximate cost.
Okay, sure.
I started off by speaking with several of the other fire chiefs in the area, particularly the chief in Maynard, Massachusetts. They took, they ran into a similar situation where they took delivery of a ladder truck that they got off of a grant. Their ladder truck did not fit into their station, they set up with the temporary structure. The chief there referred me to the company that they used, which is, and I don't want to misquote it, HTS Structures. They're out of Florida. Their total cost for the structure, the setup, the installation, the utility hookups and everything else was $70,000. And that was a purchase. They looked at leasing, they said leasing that structure for two years would have been $114,000. So much more cost-effective to just purchase it outright. I've had discussions with this company along with a couple other companies, I'm still waiting for several quotes to come in. The town administrator has prepared a warrant article to request the appropriation to purchase such a structure. I've spoken with, obviously with Dennis Ball, as he's on this committee also, and the DPW would certainly have a use for this structure once we have finished with it, when the construction project is completed. So what we're looking at for the appropriation is approximately $75,000, and that's more of a top-end appropriation. We're trying to see what we can get through the procurement and the quote process.
Chief, for, just for a visual, is it similar to the one that's out in the DCR highway garage that's covering the salt areas?
It's smaller than that, it'll be a total of about 20 feet high, maybe 15 feet wide, and then about 40 feet deep.
But not that dissimilar visually?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have a, it's kind of small, but a picture of it that I can show you. But similar concept, more squared off than rounded on the top, but also built to withstand the snow and wind loads.
Is it heated?
For the building code. It will be heated, yes. It will be hooked up to the gas utilities through the DPW, more than likely.
So that's $75,000 with heat and everything?
Correct, with all the utilities hooked up. Doesn't pay the cost for the heat, just for the utility hookups and the heater unit.
T, anything?
I have a couple of questions I'll save till the end. I'm sure there'll be questions.
Okay.
Can we get an idea of how much we spent on consultants to get, you know, because it's been two, it's been three years. I mean, the disappointing part is that we're gonna spend $75,000 on something that we really shouldn't be spending $75,000 on. It should have been done a while ago. The whole thing should have been done a while ago. My question is, the engine that you're gonna have to house is the one that's, the Silver Fox, correct?
Correct.
That's the one that's gonna be in there?
Correct.
Because you don't have enough room in the back?
That's correct.
Is the Silver Fox the new one?
No. It's the one that's currently engine 31.
So... That's the engine that we have now?
So, so when the new one comes in, that will go into the front bay where engine 31 currently resides.
And it will fit in the front bay?
The new one will fit in the front bay, neither one, neither the new one nor our current engine will fit in the rear bay.
The other bay.
Where the engine is being replaced.
Because it barely fits, the engine that's in there now barely fits in there now because they have a room off the back, but I think we need to look at, so can I ask my two questions?
Oh, sure, go ahead. Because it's apropos right now.
Go ahead.
When this engine was put in for a grant, did they measure and realize that the engine would be bigger than the actual fire station? I've had, a lot of people ask me that. And two, if it's bigger, why not just turn it in for one that will fit in the bay? That's a question.
Certainly.
I'm out there too.
Certainly. Over the years, fire apparatus has grown in size, weight, dimensions, and so on. The building, as you know, was never built to be a fire station.
Correct.
The addition was built specifically to house that engine, to fit that engine that's in there. Current app, modern apparatus, current day apparatus simply do not fit in that framework. To write a grant, you don't write a grant for a specific vehicle, you write a grant for a new fire engine. So you're not saying that, you know, we want a fire truck that's gonna fit in an eight-by-ten space. We're saying that we have a 35-year-old fire truck that needs to be replaced, and we want a new fire truck. That's what they approved the grant on.
Okay, good answer. The engine that's in the back now, is it, it's a Mack, right?
That's a Mack, a 1981 Mack.
That is a New York City fire engine.
Long Island.
It's a truck, but you can't get parts for it. And the new truck that's coming will fit, it's gonna fit perfectly in the front, you know, along with the ladder truck. It's the one that we have now, it's probably a foot, four to two long, too long for the back. But to me, it's just kind of a waste...
It's also too, also too high and too wide.
Yeah, I would think it's too wide.
It's just kind of a waste to me to spend $75,000 on something that should have been, you know, I mean, we should, and I don't want to look back, I mean, I just want to, I don't want to spend that kind of money.
But I, moving forward, we should, I think we should let them finish now and then take it under advisement.
Okay.
You know, because, I mean, there are a lot of things that should have, would have, could have, but let's...
Right, that's fine. Richie, you have anything to say?
I'm confused. So how many fire engines are you gonna have down there?
We currently have two engines and a ladder truck.
You have two pumpers?
Two pumpers and a ladder. When we take delivery of the new one, we will be selling off or trading in the 1981 Mack, so we will still have two pumpers and a ladder.
So the new fire engine's coming, is that a pumper truck?
Yes.
Oh, it is.
That's gonna be their backup, the one that's in that bay now. That'll be their backup that goes in the back.
We're gonna spend $375,000 for the design and the temporary quotas, and how much, have you got any estimates on how much the new fire engine's gonna cost?
I think that's what...
I think that's the second part of what Mr. Walsh is gonna address.
Do you have a cost? Okay, so let me get into this, this second part of this. I'm just, I'm just thinking, you got 375,000 here on the table, and then, I don't know, I don't know.
$75,000.
No, well, it's 300 for the design, too.
Oh, yeah.
375, right? Right, so the second, the second article that we're looking for is for $300,000 to design and engineer the extension of the fire station that needs to be done. Okay. And it's a very, it's a complicated issue now, because of the procurement laws have changed so much. Part of that cost, one, you have to hire an OPM, which is an owner's project manager, which would be, and then you've got to, you've gotta put out to bid even the... You're getting to the bid... Well, even the design, no, I'm talking about design. You also have to put that out to bid, and you have, the procedures have to be adopted by the selectmen to do a, selecting a design for the project. The fire station's how old? The station, I don't, it's... It's gotta be...
It was a barracks.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Have you thought about tearing that down completely? Yes, it's one of the many discussions we've had. Okay, and then, and then... But the costs you'd be talking about are probably two and a half to three times what you'd be talking about.
Tearing down the station?
Tearing, and building a new one?
Yeah.
Yes, you're probably talking two and a half to three times what we're talking.
One at a time, what?
You can do that with trailers. You can house the people and equipment some of the trailers.
Yeah, but once again, you're talking about a place to put the equipment. So if you have $75,000 to buy a temporary, now you're gonna have three temporaries. I'm saying these temporary structures, I mean, the one at the end of the causeway, you get three of those, that would cover all the pumpers, right, trucks and everything. Yeah, but now you're talking spending $200,000 for temporary solution.
I think the...
While you build, while you tear the building down and then build a new one for four, five million dollars. My point being, why are we pouring money in that, you know, plumbing, electrical, heating in an old building? Why would we invest in that? Why don't we just tear it down and get a brand-new building out of this thing?
Well, that's what, that's what they want to do, but, I mean, this is gonna be a problem trying to get this to town meeting. When they start seeing 75,000, 300,000 for a...
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, you gotta look at all this, all these numbers, and then kind of come up with a plan, you gotta get a game plan, a good, and my suggestion is come up and build a brand-new station for them. I mean, just, just kind of, we're patching things up around here, it seems like we're always patching things. And we don't invest in building a brand-new building, houses, you know, and with extra space down the road, you know, but, you know, because eventually, you know, you start licking these things, and you gotta weigh these things, and what, what we're really doing here.
Well...
You know what I mean? I just don't want to invest 375,000, and then that's for design, and then, and then...
But I, I, I think we should have him finish what the, the whole report, and then take it under advisement.
Okay, I thought he was finished, so I'm sorry. So the purpose of doing this, we've looked at a lot of different possibilities. We've looked at building a brand-new station. We know that if we build a brand-new station, we're looking in the four to five to five-and-a-half million dollars. That much money to build a fire station? Yes. Four and a five, five million dollars? Yes.
Plus the 300,000 for a design.
So that's, that's why we are proposing this plan, which would be to house the temporary engine, then build out the back of the present station so that it can house the equipment that we get in there, and then rotate forward and rebuild the rest of the station as it is. And you're looking at probably half of that amount to do that. Ultimately, you're gonna rebuild the whole station and bring it up to code. Right now, none of it's up to code.
My, T, anything?
No, that's what I wanted to hear. I, thank you.
So you got estimate of for the new building? I didn't hear that, did you? Yeah, I just said, if we were to build a brand-new building? Not a brand-new building, just, just what you're gonna do now. Oh, to do what we're looking at, we're probably looking at two and a half to three million dollars. Three million dollars?
To add to that building?
To add and then refurbish the building and bring it all up to code. So you're talking about half the amount of money that if we stood there and built a brand-new building.
Okay.
We need to take this under advisement and look at this, and... Well, that's why we're giving you the info.
The other thing is, can we get a figure on how much we spent with the company that, is it, Dor, Whittier?
Horn Whittier?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you already asked that, so I've got a note on that.
That, that would have been the $15,000 CPC.
It just seems like it was such a waste, I mean, we're no, we got nowhere with them. All we did was look at the, taking the school. We got absolutely nowhere, and taking softball fields and making them into this and that and the other thing, and it just got very convoluted, and we're nowhere. I mean, you know, and the original intent was, when Austin had done this with Mark, was to have a fire station assessment, and it turned into a conglomerate of I-don't-know-what. So we need to concentrate on this. And I can tell you right now, when people start seeing $300,000 for a consultant, basically a consultant?
No.
No.
No, that's for design, design engineering.
Design engineering is basically a consultant, that's what they're gonna think. I can tell you right now, well, I'm just telling you what they're gonna think.
Well, that's not what it is. Well, don't, don't tell them, don't tell them that's that, because it's not. Let's not, let's not, no, that's not, let's not go there.
We already had a consultant come up with a design.
I think we need a...
They came up with nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to take this under advisement.
And we will, absolutely, so...
And my other problem is, of course, sitting right next to the fire station is the Public Works Building.
Right.
Which also needs a brand-new building. I mean, they've got, I mean, it's like, Ben, he's patching the roof, I mean, he's got no, the heating condition is, I think we need to sit down and get organized and look at both structures and see what we could, we can design.
Well, the D...
If we're gonna spend $300,000 for a design of a firehouse only...
The DPW building, Richie, is essentially a garage. It's like my garage. It'll stay there, it'll be there forever. Dennis has his office there, the guys go in there, they take trucks in, and they take trucks out. It houses the backhoe, it houses all their vehicles. I think we can wait on that. It's the, the fire station, that's, the essential component right now is the fire station. So we'll take this under advisement.
But if you, that fire, that new fire engine would fit in the Public Works Bay?
Well, I don't know if they're gonna, I don't know if they're gonna want to have it over there.
Temporarily, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, again, we're one of the pumper trucks, I mean...
Decent thought, too.
We need, we need to think this one over. I just, you know, we're spending a lot of money, and I just, you know, my, my plan, you know, we gotta rethink and, you know, if we're just gonna plan and do the fire station, I, again, the building is, is shot, it's worn, it's 50 years old, 60 years old.
By two senses.
Plumbing, the plumbing, the electrical, the heating, that all has to be done, and it's easy to tear it down. It's like Kelly Green, that old building down there, that, that should have been tore down in the beginning.
Well, again, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at a, at a meeting this Wednesday night, and I want to remind everybody of that, the water and sewer, and we're a million dollars in the hole already with that, so now we're gonna be $3 million in the hole with the fire station, so...
But again, again, I mean, the people have to realize, you know, you gotta have, you know, you've gotta think this one through.
Little bites, so...
The water, the water and sewer is, is, you know, people want to get up in the morning, they want to turn the water on, and they want to be able to flush it thoroughly. If they can't do that, they're gonna be very, very upset.
All right.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
T?
I want to concentrate on just the fire station. I think we take it under advisement unless Dave has some more stuff to add.
I, and I...
I'd like to do that and move on.
And he's right, we will move on, and I think that we will gonna, we are gonna consider only a fire station. I don't want police stations involved, I don't want DPW buildings involved, it's the fire station. This is how it was intended by Austin and Mark when they first came up with this idea, and I think we wasted 15,000 to 20,000 bucks on a, on a consultant that did absolutely nothing. And people see that, and it's a shame, but...
It was an idea, it was an idea, to, to, again, look at the whole area. I mean, you know, that fire station's in the wetlands, too. I mean, so, you're not, you know, it's something we gotta look at. I move, Mr. Chairman, we take this, the committee's recommendation on the fire house assessment.
And you all say over there? Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Frank.
Public Pathways.
Okay, so Dennis Ball and myself have met with numerous residents who are adjacent to the public pathways around Little Nahant. We've collected their input, we've taken a look at the pathways, and at this point, what we recommend is that either the planning board as a committee, or the planning board plus others as a committee, review the prioritization of these pathways to see if we want to actually retain and build out all of them, or if we want to look at a smaller number, or how, how we approach this.
Okay. Let me just say this, the planning board, this is under their purview, and it's gonna stay that way. I'm not gonna, we're not gonna assign any more committees to this. They already have, they have money in, they have a budget of over 10,000 bucks for this, okay?
CPC, yeah.
CPC funds, right. And they have done a ton of work on it. Actually, the town clerk came up and showed me that the, Ralph Reed had done a survey on it several years ago. I'm gonna say this only once, and I, we said it before, Richard Snyder and that, they're doing a good job, it takes time, they want to do it, the planning board, and they're the ones that have to hear it. And not only Little Nahant, but Big Nahant, I want them all taken care of. And this whole thing with taking over, you know, people encroaching them has to start, simple as that. So my, my vote would be to keep it with the planning board. I don't want to have another committee. Discussion? Discussion, T.
We should make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning board be the sole enforcement of these private rights of ways.
Second?
Second?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Are the planning board, are they elected?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
So they will see what it's like. I'm sure they've seen it, but they will see, they will make the decision, because people are not gonna be happy.
Right. Well, and they, and you know something? They do a good job, you got Richard Snyder, you got...
Very good job.
Right. And they, you know, it takes time to get these things done, and I've, I've already discussed it with them, I've gotten emails from Richard, and Richard's, by the way, is recovering from hip surgery, so, I can give him a point. Yeah, so he's doing well. So anyway, we're not gonna create any new committees. What's gonna happen is they're gonna, they're gonna move forward with it. I will be going to some of their meetings to talk about it, and I'm gonna also recommend that the green communities, we have to have hearings, the planning board has to have hearings to accept the stretch code.
You actually have that down in new business as B?
Okay, so we'll just leave that, they know what they have to do, all right?
Yep.
And they need, they start, they need to start meeting so we can get it on the warrant. All right, can we vote the question? Yes, we're gonna vote the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay. Okay. Public Pathway Town Administrator Report.
Uh, okay, we're at that time of the year where we have to, um, open the annual town meeting warrant and you have a motion for that.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen annual town meeting warrant for the submitted articles by all town boards, committees, personnel, and public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Any discussion on it?
No.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Next item is we have the FY two thousand nineteen preliminary budget. Um, the deadline for submission of department budgets is tomorrow. So, we'll start to roll that together and come back to you on the twenty-first for a discussion about the budget. You also have in your packet, uh, the fee schedules with some minor changes, the classification with some very minor changes, and a capital plan with some minor changes. What I'll do is come to the next meeting on the twenty-first, ready to kind of walk you through those. Um, and I'll answer any questions that you have in between, but for Richie, to your point about the capital plan, if you look in there, there's, uh, an insert for the DPW building and the police building, uh, as requested at the last meeting. So, um, if you just take a look at, spend some time with it, it's, uh, quite comprehensive.
We're having a meeting next week, Jeff.
Yep.
And then we're having another meeting on the twenty-first. I suggest you move that twenty-first meeting to the first of the week, first, uh, in January. It's just kinda back-to-back, big back, too many me's. It's Christmas week, you know?
You ever pay with you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I thought maybe you'd go out and give me a Christmas present.
Well, I, I'll bring gifts to your house and stuff. Okay.
So, um, if you could take a look at those, that'd be great. Um, moving along, uh, item number D. Uh, we have a one-day liquor license for the Nahant Vets Association and you have a mo- a motion for that.
Is that a, um...
That is a D. Three D, yep.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the one-day all liquor lic- liquor license, liquor, all, all liquor license for the Nahant Vets Association fundraiser on December fifteenth from five P.M. to nine P.M. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Discussion.
It's very nice that you read this one, Richie, as a veteran.
Thank you.
It's, it's, uh, very fitting.
Thank you.
See, the time made me into a nice guy.
You're changing, I can see you're changing your ways, Steve.
I'm trying.
Holiday season.
Oh, it's the holiday season.
Uh, ready to vote, sir. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next, this is just an, uh, this has to do with the sewer, um, situation. And we just submitted a community compact grant with the Town of Swampscot for a joint regionalization of a harbor crossing for the sewer, as we talked about before. What that provides us is two hundred thousand dollars for design and assessment of the crossing and will allow us to move to the next phase in the compact grant and hopefully gain funding for the installation. So, that's just a FYI on that.
Um, hold on, I wanna talk about that. Um, Swampscot already has a sewer system that's adequate. We're not, we're not gonna get any money out of them. Um, I, why are we doing this co- uh, community compact grant? What's it, what's the benefit for it, other than two hundred thousand dollars that can be really wasted if we're not careful?
The discussion with Swampscot is that they, they're learning from our experience, so if you don't have a parallel alternative that, uh, if you can switch, if you have a break, that you, they would end up in the same boat we're in. So, if they make this connection and actually keep their old line, uh, as the alternative backup, then they can find themselves able to better respond.
So, why aren't they applying for the community compact grant?
Uh, we had most of it put together already, so they, and it's a regionalization, so we have to go...
I want you to wait on that.
It's already been submitted.
Well, I, I shouldn't be doing that. You should, without our approval, you should be, I wanted you to wait on it. That's two hundred thousand dollars.
You actually approved it at a previous meeting.
I don't think so. At the start of the minutes, um, I think that we need to wait on that because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve a, a, a grant for two hundred thousand dollars for Swampscot to hook up to our sewer system on the causeway because it's two hundred thousand dollars for a design, just like the fire station, the fifteen thousand dollar design. Door Whittier is gone, whatever, they, they, you might as well throw that book away. Uh, and now we're gonna have two hundred thousand, a two hundred thousand dollar grant. It, it's really gonna get us nothing. It's gonna get us absolutely nothing. So, I wanna put the brakes on that one.
Well, we've submitted the application, so what happens is if we get the award, that's when we can have this discussion because we can always reject the award.
Well, put that on the, put that on the next, uh, agenda. I want it, I want it, well, gentlemen, any, any thoughts? This is all Swampscot now. Don't forget.
No, no, no.
You're gonna tie into our sewer, Richie, on the causeway.
Nope.
Okay, and what, what does it have to do? You're talking about two hundred thousand dollars that can be just swept away.
No, 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 you're talking planning. We, we, we need a new sewer main.
We need a new sewer main, Richie.
No, 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 I understand. Hold on.
They don't.
Hold on. But it behooves us not to regionalize with Swampscot so that, you know...
We're not regionalizing with them, Richie. They're gonna, they're gonna run a line, a, a spear line. There, there's nothing wrong with their sewer main. Listen. They're, what they're gonna do is put a, a tire, a line into Swampscot.
Can I finish? I, I've already heard your, I, I've already heard your argument.
Okay.
I don't wanna debate you. Okay, the, the problem is, I'm gonna put it right out for you, okay? We're gonna build a brand-new sewer line because we don't want our sewer line on the lineway.
That's right.
Neither do they, okay? Because when it breaks down out there, they've gotta send the traffic to hush-gosh. And, you know, the governor was sitting in traffic at Bell Circle for four hours one night when we had the sewer line break out there. Two breaks on this whole thing. So, they're thinking the same way. And Lynn, okay, again, uh, with the new mayor, I've talked to the mayor about this, going across the harbor, it makes, I tell ya, that, that, uh, bottom, the sandy bottom, you have to hit bedrock, okay? And for them to add into our sewers, you know, coming across the, the islands down there, makes sense to, to regionalize, okay?
Yep.
And we'll get more funding down the road for the whole line, ends up.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see about that.
No, 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 again, again, you're, you're putting, you know, but it makes sense to regionalize with them. The word "regionalization" is coming, okay? No matter what you say, it's coming. And it's coming in a lot of different ways, believe me, okay? And this is the start of it. This is a, a smart move and it's our next-door neighbor. It's one of our neighbors, okay?
Who are applying for the grant, Richie? They're not.
I, I...
We're, we're gonna be on the hook for this, not them.
Okay, but...
It's them. They're, they're the ones that, listen, we have a plan to do it anyway. Why aren't they applying for the grant?
I, I don't...
I disagree with you, sorry. And I want, and I'm, I'm gonna ask for a, a motion on this to, to, to put the brakes on it.
I totally disagree with you because it just, it does not make sense.
But it's already in motion, so the motion to stop it is after we get...
Okay. Well, you know how I feel about it. I want, I want more investigation done on it. I wanna know more about it. This is the first. I, I haven't even seen it yet. I haven't, I, I haven't seen the actual grant, what you're gonna spend the two hundred thousand dollars on.
We discussed this.
So, we discussed this and in there is the text and if you go into the second and third page, it'll talk, it'll give you the itemization.
I see, I see a, a line here.
We discussed this with, with the regionalization of Swampscot, one of the meetings. Have you mentioned discussing it?
About ten minutes, Richie?
No, no, it was one of...
It was with Dan Coughlin.
No, no, absolutely not. This is, again, it's two hundred thousand dollars. I wanna put the brakes on it. I want them to be partly responsible for this, for this, this community compact grant, okay? Because if we don't use it in two years, what happens to it, Jeff? Do you wanna explain that, if it's not done right?
Well, what we do is we get the award of the grant. We can refuse it at that time and then...
Jeff, uh, that's not the question I asked you. If we don't use it properly, what happens?
What do you mean? I don't understand you, we don't use it properly.
If you don't use the grant money properly for the community compact, okay, I'm the one that signed up for it, Richie. I know how it works. I talked to the director of it. And what happens is if you, if you don't use it properly, you wind up with a problem. And that is, you can't, you can't go back for grant money.
Why would you, why would you reject community grant money? Why would you reject that?
We have to write the grant. This is, it's state aid, okay? It's not, it's not as, it's not what you think it is. And why isn't, my question is, the big question is, why isn't Swampscot doing anything with this?
They are. They are participating in this grant.
They are? So, they were on the hook for it?
Well, we're both making the request. If we, if we both get the...
I wanna see their request.
You, you have it right there.
I wanna see, where is it?
You, you can only submit...
Again, this is, this is what I got tonight.
You could, well, no, you, I actually gave that to you earlier. I gave it to you last week, um, in an email.
No, Jeff, I don't have it. I don't have it, okay?
Well, I don't know how, how to explain that, but anyway, so, we can only submit one application for two towns.
Okay, and whose, whose name's on the, on the application?
Both Swampscot and Nahant.
Why would it matter?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I don't understand.
It matters to me, Richie.
It matters to you.
Yes, it matters to me because I'm looking out for the Town of Nahant. I don't care about Swampscot. I'm looking out for the Town of Nahant in, in our infrastructure. We just threw away one point three million dollars. We get no benefit out of that, out of what, what just happened on the lineway. Nothing, okay?
What do you mean, one point three million dollars?
We, it cost us one point three million dollars to fix that sewer break on the lineway.
Yeah?
Okay?
Yeah, what, okay.
What good is it?
Let me, no, let me ask a question. Well, what would you, let me ask you a question. How would you handle that?
Fix it.
Fi- fix it, yeah.
Okay.
It costs us one point three mil...
What, what I would've done was, I would've had that book and the infrastructure should've been done two or three years ago.
Wow.
Okay? That, that's just my que- that, that's just my answer to you, all right?
I, I, I disagree with you. That, that book, that just came out.
No, no, it didn't. It's been out, Mark Collin wrote it with Dan Coughlin. It's been out for a long time, okay? It didn't just come out. And I'm gonna tell you something right now. The, the actual one point three million dollars, we got no benefit from that. Once we abandon that line, we just, we're still on the hook to pay for something that we're not gonna use. We got, this, this, this...
I don't understand we're not gonna use. I don't wanna debate you on this, okay? I, I, I really wanna, you know, this is like absolute suicide. You're gonna say no to our next-door neighbor, a regionalization on a grant that we're, we're gonna put together? And that, that makes sense to them to tie, bring that, you know, their pipe is coming across our, you know, and they don't wanna get caught like we did with that sewer breaking on the lineway.
And I agree with Richie in the fact that...
Swampscot will be tied, Swampscot will be tied in to this forced main as an emergency backup route for their sewer discharge as well. It's an emergency and that's all it is. And you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars of our grant money to, to, to do this.
This is money that is coming to us because it's a regionalization grant.
You just told, no, you just told me, Jeff, that Swampscot and Richie just told me that you were gonna, that Swampscot's gonna tie in 'cause they don't want their pipe on the lineway when they're not having a problem with it, 'cause I've already talked to them. I've already talked to our, our, our Superintendent of Public Works. I'm not in the habit of throwing away money. That's all. If you, if you wanna go right ahead, but that's not my opinion. My opinion is, I wanna look further into it, to the grant, okay?
I, you know, okay, I...
I'm the one that knows a little bit about the grant system on this, the community compact, 'cause I'm the one that signed up for it, all right? And I'm telling you...
You, you signed up for what?
Yes, I did. The community compact. When I first became a selectman, I signed up for the community compact. It was me.
Can we perhaps wait and see on this and...
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
I need to, I would like to see this also.
Read it. This is the first I've seen of this. I asked, I asked this to have the sent, sent to me. This is the first I've seen. And I don't see Swampscot's name on any, I don't see...
Must've been at a different meeting.
Yeah.
I don't see it. I don't see anything here and I don't see, I don't see where Swampscot's name is on any grant application. When I see that, maybe I'll change my mind, but not until then. I want them on the hook just as well as us, okay?
They are on the hook and I'll resend you that email that I sent you last week.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and T, to your point, um, when we do get the award, we'll bring that forward and at that point, the town has to authorize accepting the award. So, that, that's where we have the conversation.
That's when I would like the conversation.
Yep, yep, okay.
And I was, I, I remember this 'cause I was at the same meeting, too. But I'm, I'm still confused as to Swampscot, uh, part in this, so at that point, it will be further explained for us.
It was never explained to us that Swampscot was gonna be part of the grant the last time.
And we can have Dan Coughlin come and talk to just the specifics on that.
Yeah, I've already talked to him about it.
Okay, well, then he can come and talk to the public.
Good.
Um, so, the next item is CPC Committee, Committee. We have, um, a number of open positions, two of which are the Board of Selectmen's appointees. Um, one just, we, we've had one sitting for a while, but we just recently received, um, notification that Carl Easton will be stepping away shortly. So, um, we do need to fill these positions and, um, if you can give me any recommendations on how you'd like to proceed.
Can we get a list of, um...
Yeah, so if you go...
Well, first of all, can you, can you email Dave Coughlin to have him send out those appointment letters to the Open Space Committee?
Sure.
Margaret Alexander and I, I think I, I already told him, but he's probably busy. Margaret Alexander and Diana Brandy. So, either one of them would be one of the candidates on that. Um, this is it here, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, if you look on three H, um, that's the list.
Thank you.
You bet.
We have to ask people for it. I have, I have it all. No, but we can...
Yep. And you don't have to make any really decisions tonight, so I'm just, I'm just looking for direction on how you'd like to proceed. Uh, the CPC is obviously plugging along and they, um, need some help.
Yep. Okay, so Open Space, we can put, we can, we can, why don't we add their names to this because they should be appointed. There's only two. And I told them I would work with them.
If you look at the top of the second page, there's the Recreation Committee that's penciled in. On top. Oop, maybe not. Maybe it's just on mine.
No.
Hey, there. Sorry about that.
Uh, Kelly Frary, Susan Rosarosa, Jennifer McCarthy. Those are the only three on the record?
Yeah, there's, there are two open, openings on, so there's five total. Uh, the only three have been filled historically.
So, um, they, they have one.
Correct. And Jennifer used to be that person, um, but she had to step away this year because her schedule wouldn't permit her to continue on CPC.
All right. Have you talked to Kelly or Sue?
Yeah, I've been working with Jen, trying to get out, one of the other two, they won't commit. So, what we're looking is we have those two positions. I've asked her to try to figure out how to fill those, especially with one person who'd be willing to then fill the CPC position.
Well, Recreation Committee, can we branch that out to, let's say, the Golf Committee? Why can't we use somebody from the Golf Committee as part of the Recreation?
We could. Um, did you, we just need somebody who's willing to do that, 'cause we need someone who would do golf, recreation, and then CPC.
Why don't we, why don't we reach out to the Golf Committee on that?
Five people on it now.
That's, that's yours, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'll reach out to them and, uh, report back to you and then, uh, give you some names and hopefully we can, uh, cajole them into helping us in this situation, 'cause the, again, the CPC is, uh, in desperate need at this point. And that's all I have for, uh, Town Administrator Report.
Okay. Um, so we'll have to think. Actually, Jeff, there's a couple of people. I got an email out. There's a couple of people on that, um, for Board of Selectmen appointees. I don't know if you got, you guys have any, you have any, Wendy, Richie?
Just found out about it tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, me, too.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all business?
Verizon. So, um, we have talked about the Verizon license. Um, I've gone through the, uh, required public hearings and we are now at a point now where we've got the license before us. I need a vote of the selectmen to accept the license. And again, it'll have an impact of eighty-two cents per, per subscriber per month, as we discussed earlier.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the renewal of the Verizon cable television license to continue providing cable services to residents of town pursuant to the terms and conditions of the license agreement dated for a term of five years.
I'll second the discussion.
Discussion?
Hearings, none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Oppose. Richie's name.
Yeah. Well, that's right.
So, is it?
And Carl Easton for the...
Yes.
Work he did on CPC.
Yes. Thank you, Carl. Uh, Carl Easton, um, actually has been on the CPC for a long time. He's a very bright guy. He, uh, actually has done an awful lot of work with, with, I can tell you with me, on, on different things and he's, uh, he's just, he's great. And, um, I just wanna thank him. He's been on the CPC for some time now and he must do some traveling. And, uh, so, he's the gentleman that just re- re- retired from the CPC, so we thank, uh, Carl for his service to the Town of Nahant.
And I'd like to add that it's been a delight working with Carl. Um, Carl has been a true professional and has soldiered through every year and he does a remarkable amount of work, so thank you very much, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, that last vote was two to one.
Yep.
Okay? Okay.
Next items are a series of, uh, your annual licenses and you've got a series of votes there, so if you wanna move through them.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve common victualer licenses as standalones are in connection with a liquor license for the year two thousand seventeen for the following establishment. One, Atlantic Functions Inc., DBA Ocean View Zero Willow Road. Two, Tides at Nahant, two B Wilson Road. Three, Nahant Country Club, two eighty Nahant Road. Four, Goodell's Inc., DBA The Bayside, one Southwick Ave. Five, Nahant Knights of Columbus Building Association, DBA Knights, Nahant Knights of Columbus Seventeen Relay Yard. Six, Seaside Variety, one forty-one Nahant Road. Seven, Seaside Pizza, one forty-nine Nahant Road. Eight, Dunkin' Donuts, two A Wilson Road, Nahant. Nine, Play It As It Lies Golf Management, one Willow Road, Nahant. And further, that the release of said licenses is subject to the payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the Town of Nahant.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, uh, discussion?
None.
Okay, hearing, none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen to approve by the A B C C. Nahant Country Club, two eighty Nahant Road, club license, all alcoholic beverages. Knights of Columbus Building Association Incorporated Seventeen Relay Yard, club license, all alcohol beverages. Goodell Incorporated, DBA And Bayside Restaurant, one Southwick Avenue, restaurant license and all alcoholic beverages. Atlantic Functions Incorporated, during business at Ocean View Zero Willow Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. Play It As It Lies Golf Management, one Willow Road, all alcoholic beverages. R and C Convenience Store, during business at Seaside Variety, one forty-one Nahant Road, package store, license and all alcoholic beverages. Tides at Nahant at, uh, two B Wilson Road, restaurant license, all halco- beverage, all alcoholic beverages. And further, that the release of said license is subject to the payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the Town of Nahant. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Bring it home, T. You got one more.
Okay. I move that the board of selectman vote to approve the following entertainment licenses for 2017 for the following establishments. One, Nahat Knights of Columbus, 17 Relay Yard, five TVs, five musicians, musicians, and pool table, and one amusement device. Two, Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, TV, live music, DJ. Three, Functions Inc., DBA Oceanview Zero Willow Road, live music, DJ. Four, Goodell's Inc., DBA The Bayside, 1 Southwick Ave, jukebox, seven-piece orchestra, non-amplified. Five, Tides at Nahat, 2B Wilson Road, two amusement devices, live music, and karaoke. Six, Play It As It Lies Golf Management, 1 Willow Road, four TVs, live music, DJ, outside entertainment, subject Exhibit A of lease agreement. And further, that the release of said licenses is subject to the payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
Second motion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, there's a, um...
Legal award?
Well, request to a plan, uh, let's, let's go through that first. Let's make the request formal to the planning board to have the stretch code hearing.
So, move.
Second. Richie seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Great. We also have a legal award that was just come to our attention. It appears back in 2010, there was, uh, the town came, in conjunction with other communities that are listed on page two of this, uh, letter, all came together to take legal action against National Grid for damage done by gas leaks to town street trees. And so, our award is $39,228.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that the board of selectman vote to approve the consolidated settlement of Town versus National Grid for damage to public shade tree stock from leaking natural gas lines in the amount of $3,918.
Second.
Uh, for discussion. So, we're going to, we're going to get 3,900 though, right? We're going to get the 39,000.
39,000.
Okay, so, that's going to go into like a fund for...
Wait a minute.
I think it's 39,000.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. For some reason, their typo, they've got a typo there. It is 39,000.
It's 39,000, but it's 3,900 after they take their percentages out. So, why don't we see if we can get some, uh...
Well, it's, it's about .02 of that, so...
Right.
That's, that would be 3,918.
Did I read that wrong? Is it 39,000 or 3,918?
3,918.
I didn't hear you.
3,918.
Okay, I did read it right.
That's what we're going to get. I had read it last week, so...
He didn't hear because we were talking.
Yeah. So, I'd like to see us try to buy some, uh, beech trees or some nice trees.
Heritage trees, yeah.
Because I know that, the, the, what's, just, Corinna Cresson just lost one down on, uh, Will, Emerald Road, and, you know, she, she spent a lot of money, I know that, trying to save it.
Yep.
And it's too bad. It was a beautiful, it's been there for, forever. So, we need to plant some more trees. Good ones, though.
Beaches are good ones, yeah.
Yeah, good. That's good.
I'd like to see us plant some trees down on Spring Road to hide the dump. As we promised, you know, right in front of that, um, the basketball court, that line those trees.
That's a good idea.
Very similar to the Cape Cod where they hide their dumps down there.
Yep.
We just, you know, because the neighbors down there, and all they see is the dump, and we promised to put them some trees down there next to a gas station.
Yep.
I agree 100 percent. If we have to do a motion, we can.
Well, I've got, I've got the list here.
But you've got it, right?
I've got the list, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I mean, we're going to spend 30,000.
Good idea, Richie.
And the other one, I would put them along the causeway, some, some nice cherry blossoms, you know, like we have.
I could use a couple in front of my house, too.
Along, 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 uh, you know, short beach on the other side where extending down from Veterans Park all the way to the, the extended ball field, a little protection for the, uh, the ball players, people driving in there.
Also, Emerald Road residents have been seeking trees, so if you go down Emerald Road, it's rather stark.
Yep.
So, yeah, that'd be a great place as well.
And, uh, maybe we can, maybe we can talk to Kyra. I mean, he, he knows, he seems to know a lot about trees, so...
Oh, yeah, yep.
Maybe we can push it, put a push on and have some of the, um, people donate, um, money to the, uh, tree fund.
Yep.
And people, you know...
To match what we just got.
To match 39. We come up with, you know, we, uh, we had someone donate all the flags, the holiday flag, which are very nice-looking. We need to, we need to send a letter of thanks to that individual that, that bought all those holiday flags. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
I second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that was nice of them to do that. Okay.
Went to parking ban?
Yes.
Announcements?
Okay, the closing announcements.
I don't have them, but...
That's okay. Okay, the town of Nahat has winter parking policy stating that all vehicles must be parked off the street during the hours of 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM from December 20th, uh, 2015?
Yeah, it's stated.
Okay. December 20th to March 20th, uh, that's our normal, right. Our normal, normal, no parking ban. If you are a resident of Nahat and do not have adequate off-street parking, you may pick up a parking waiver application at the Nahat Police Station. Once the, I think we already read this once before. Once the application is submitted and reviewed, you will be notified upon its approval. It doesn't exempt you, it doesn't give you the right to park during a snowstorm, though. During a snow emergency, you have to get the car off the street.
Well, we should, we should get ready for this weekend.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I drove through Swampscot. I go through it almost every day, and there was a nice big blue light with a nice sign saying, "When the light's blinking, there's a snow emergency." We have that, plus the police can make calls to us when there's a sewer break. That can also be when there's a big snowstorm. Now, we may have one Saturday, and it's not the parking ban. So, that fits, like, mid-January, when it's 60 degrees, you should be able to park on the street until there's a storm.
Right.
Now, the chief came up and gave a lot of reasons why, and, and I concur with him, but...
Mr. Chairman, I move we install a blue snow emergency light at the beginning of the entrance to town. I so move that.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll get some prices together, Jeff?
Yeah.
Prices, yeah.
Thank you.
First, all right, good. Okay, town hall hours close Monday, December 22nd and 25th, and Monday, January 1st. Also, the 22nd Annual Christmas Parade, and I believe it's dedicated to Tommy Hutton, who loved that parade so very much, is on 12/23 this year.
Wow.
It's a, it's a great, it's actually, yeah, it's actually a great parade. It's a lot of fun. And I have one more closing announcement. December 15th, at the Life Saving Station, between 5:00 and 9:00, there'll be food, music, and a cash bar with a suggested donation of $20 made out to the Nahat Vet Association, and the memo should read Wayne, for Wayne Noonan. I just want to let everybody know that Wayne had a bad car accident, and he's been very instrumental in the, uh, in the vets, and he's been, he's been in Nahat forever.
Oh, absolutely.
He's a great guy, and, um, so, he's...
$25?
It's $20, I think it's $20, yeah.
20?
Yeah. Yeah, $20, it's going to, they're going to have food. It's going to be a cash bar, and all the proceeds will go to him, his, uh, his benefit.
Is it the 15th or the 17th?
Um, it's...
Because if you go from the liquor license, it says the 17th.
I think it's the 17th.
It's the vets, vets, yeah.
Is it for him? All right, so...
I, I believe so.
I think it's the 17th.
I think it's the 17th.
Okay, so, it's for him. So, and I, I got the 15th somehow through an email, but it's for Wayne, and he's a, uh, good guy, and we hope, you know, I'm, I'm trying to find out how he's doing, and, um, hopefully he'll, he'll be, he'll be fine, and I'm sure he will. But I'm sure he has a little bit of a road ahead of him. So, okay?
Yeah, it would be nice if people bought the tickets, even if they don't show up.
Correct.
This is a, this is a, it's one of, uh, one of these fundraisers that we're protecting one of our own.
Right.
He's a veteran, a disabled veteran, Big End, within, so, I know his family would be greatly appreciated, especially this time of the year. He's up against it, and financially, any and all help would be greatly appreciated.
Jeff? All right. So, that's it for the open, uh, for the closing.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, now, we actually have two executive sessions, Richie?
Yep.
So, we're going to go into executive session and not to return to open session?
I was going to make that motion for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for the sole purpose of contract negotiations